Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Board of Selectment meeting of November 17th. Just a couple of announcements before we begin. On the Fire Chief search, as many of you know, we've made an offer to Mr. Stephen Gahn, and we'll be entering into executive session at the end of this meeting today to discuss contract terms with him. Again, farewell for Chief Beldon. That'll be tomorrow, four to six. Welcome anyone down to stop by and wish him well, have a cup of coffee. It'll be over here in the -- at this police -- excuse me, at the fire station. The announcement on the Third Annual Hatfield Police and Fire Charity Breakfast. Hosted at the First Congregational Church on Main Street, on the 28th, from 7:30 to 11:30. It's $10 a person, open seating, serving eggs, bacon, home fries, pancakes, sausage, juice, coffee and tea, and all proceeds are going to the Shriners Hospital. So encourage anyone interested, please, please attend. Again, the Luminarium coming up on December 20th for staff, reminder about the capital improvement requirements for the next six fiscal years, due end on the first of December. Also, you recall, we sent out a number -- excuse me, a letter with a draft schedule of the hearings on capital budget requests. And please, again, if anyone has any issues with the time slot, or they no longer have a requirement, please let the town administrator know so we can adjust that schedule. Anyone else have a -- the other?
No.
Thank you. Public forum. Mr. Punska.
Gentlemen, Ron Punska, Sixth Maple Street. I'm kind of here to discuss and, in a way, kind of complain about the Recreation Department. There's been some issues that have been festering for probably a couple of years. I can digress a little bit about a couple of years ago because two of the gentlemen weren't on the board then. A young lady was appointed to the Rec Commission. When she went to the first meeting, she was advised by one individual, asked what she was doing there, and was told that they didn't want her. Some sequence in that time, the Rec Department has been slowly deteriorating. As you noticed, there's been a lot of vacancies, people have resigned, and one of the major problems is one or two, perhaps, individuals have not been there to serve the best interest of all the kids in town. They've kind of been pulling kids away to other communities, when in fact, as a board, as a member of that board, they should be there addressing and attending to the issues for all the kids. Now, this fall, soccer program, they had only a first and second grade soccer program. Third, fourth, and fifth and sixth grade had to go outside of town because, again, some of the kids were pulled away to other teams. And most recently, the -- one of the parents called one of the board members and asked why they haven't received notice, or what about the basketball program? And they were told, quite succinctly, that there's not going to be a program because there aren't enough kids. However, they never sent out notices, so how could they know that there weren't enough kids? So here we have several Hatfield kids who would like to be playing basketball and no program because the Recreation Department isn't stepping up. And once again, kids were pulled by one of the individuals or more to other programs. And this has been going on for the last few years. You know, I think the Select Board, they need to be held accountable. I think you fund them, what, $25,000, $30,000 a year? I don't know the amount exactly. And last but not least, I've even heard a rumor that perhaps the summer program, which is way too short, may not be run next year. And my concern is, when you serve on a board, you're there to serve the interest of everyone, whether it's kids or the entire population of a community. I served on a Recreation Commission in New Jersey, and we had several different programs running, athletic and non-athletic. And we were all there, serving the interest of all the children, not just the select few. And I think many, or some of the people who may be sitting on these boards are only there for their -- serving the one interest and not interested in serving all the kids. Now, I don't know if you have any questions?
I would ask that we defer to the process. This is a forum, and essentially, we haven't had an opportunity to look at the background situation or information from my point of view. And I think it's important that we have that so that we collectively can have an open discussion and not just respond.
I understand.
So I would move that we have a, you know, in consultation with Ron or any other representatives, we have that conversation, but we need some background information, and I think that's appropriate, rather than just doing it at this point without all interested parties being available.
Well, one other thing, too.
And my intent is not to have a conversation.
No. One other thing. In previously, many times, their meetings were never posted, so people knew, never knew when there was a meeting. I can tell you that for a fact. And I don't even know if they actually had quarms for each and every meeting. And by state laws, you all, as we all know, those meetings have to be posted, and to have a official meeting, you have to have a quorum. But this is disgrace. Our kids can't play basketball, and they're being told there's not enough kids. And no one got notices.
Can I just say something real quickly?
Refer to the chair.
This all came later than that, the last few days, and my -- so we reached out to the North County Rec Department because we were nervous that our sons wouldn't have an opportunity to play basketball. And there's now a waitlist for the third and fourth grade boys. So now, as we sit here today, there's no program for our boys to play, and girls.
Okay.
I actually reached out to another father who did say to me, point blank, he was also told that the sixth grade would not have a team because there weren't numbers. And my question to him two nights ago was, nothing was sent out, how do you know there's not numbers?
Well, thank you. Mr. Gahn was pointing out, normally, we receive issues, but we don't address them the first time we receive them, we'll go back and work it and reengage.
My only problem, Jeff, is these people have not been accountable in recent years. And they have a budget which is being funded by town, but forget the money, it's the kids. And all of the kids aren't getting their due diligence.
Got the message. All right.
Just for clarification, and in case it's needed, I have no problem with the discussion being held, I just want the players to be there.
Oh, absolutely.
No, I understand.
But I thought it was time. I kept my silence for two years, particularly after that person was slapped in the face and embarrassed, literally.
This was brought up to the chairman last year of the Rec Committee in September, and he said, "This is the way it's been." And this was from one parent who was working in Houston with a lot of us. And the chairman said, "You're the only parent complaining, I don't hear any other issues." And he let it go.
Got the message.
Now, and I realize you have a new board, and there's one other issue. There's a question whether there's five or six members. I've heard that one member has resigned, but I don't know that, I don't believe the clerk has received a resignation.
He has not received the resignation from the individual that we're thinking is resigning.
It should be five members, should it not? So you don't have a situation.
Yeah, it's a seven-member committee.
Seven members, fine, so you've got the extra -- yeah.
All right, fine. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We'll get back. First item is the approval of minutes. Is there a motion to approve Board of Select minutes of 29 September?
So moved.
You'll have to second it, Jeff.
Second? No, I'm sorry, you have to second it because I wasn't there.
No, 29 September. Pat Gahn.
Pardon me. I'm looking at November 5th. I'll second it.
All right.
It's fine.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Motion to accept the minutes of October 30th.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Motion to accept the minutes of November 4th.
Second?
I have some --
November 4th.
November 5th, I don't have the 4th.
There's also a 5th, and here's the 4th.
November 4th, Stephen Gahn was not present.
You were not present.
Okay.
I'll second. No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
The 4th.
Motion to accept the regular meeting and the executive session meeting minutes of November 7th.
I'll second that.
I'm sorry, you were, you were not there. I'll second it. No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chief Oslie?
I just wanted to introduce you to Sam Sharp. He's hopefully going to be appointed as a reserve officer. We actually sponsored him through the Reserve Academy, which he just graduated. When was it?
September 13th.
September. And he will be starting his field training officer stuff as soon as possible, as soon as we get him sworn in with the town clerk. Yeah, I believe you have his --
Do you have his resume?
Yep, we do, thank you.
I think he's going to work out nicely.
Motion to appoint.
Second?
Second?
Yep.
Any other discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Aye. Welcome aboard.
Easy and painless.
Off to work, quickest meeting you'll ever have on.
You don't want to come back.
Welcome aboard, Sam.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Yep, take care.
Good luck.
Phil?
Just, uh, thank you. Just give you some updates on where we are. We signed, well, the board had signed the notice to proceed with Hallock Water to start the sewer project up on North Street. They mobilized some equipment up there. I met with Tom this morning for a little bit, and they're ready to go. So he's fingering four to six weeks, weather permitting. So that's where we stand with the sewer.
Is it, are they going to start on the 23rd?
They are starting.
Before?
They're probably starting this week.
Okay.
Yeah. Yep, so that's good. The water transmission main, well, they started pulling a little bit of the pipe today. It'll continue for the rest of the week. They're going slow to see how the sleeve goes through. We'll just have to wait and see. Doesn't seem like there'll be any problems, but slow go. Slow go.
What's the schedule, do you know?
They figure within a week they should pull it.
Okay.
Long as things are okay. As I discussed with you earlier, that, you know, in my office about, there was a little bit of slurry coming out, and they were watching, they were monitoring it, so they figure they're deep enough where it's not going to affect anything, so we'll see.
Okay.
And the sidewalk project, as you can all see, moving right along. We took a few things out and extended a few of the things. Across the street was supposed to be a blacktop overlay, we took that out and have them doing the concrete. Had a little issue with the market, with how to line the sidewalk up, but it seemed to come out okay now. We took the island out, relocating the island, going to put the concrete in there to match up with all the crosswalks, because we can't have the sidewalk go askew anywhere, it has to be a straight shot, so. As you noticed, the sidewalk here, that the crosswalk went to nowhere, is now, on the other side, there's a sidewalk where it's going to be, so. Then they're doing school street up to Fishtails. We're going to realign the sidewalk and crosswalk across the street for the old age project because right now it is angled towards the driveway, so we're going to create a new crosswalk markings there and a new sidewalk to go to the street. So it's going well. I know there's a question from Mass Works about invoices, we have not received any as of date, so.
Okay. I was going to ask you, percentage of the project complete, do you say?
I would say it's over 50%. I would say it's probably 80% of the project is complete.
Okay.
I know that, you know, that one side of Main Street is done, the other side where the trees were, they just had a little bit of concrete left to do, and then the looming's just about complete on that side, so it's a good 80% complete.
I received email communication from Mass Works, they're requesting an update, so I had touched base with Phil earlier and --
How about the signage?
The signage, we'll probably wait till the spring, because we can't do the painting now. It's probably too cold, but we'll do it, come back in the spring, because they want to come back anyways and see if the grass takes, so they'll have to redo the looming and seeding if it doesn't, so. It looks good.
What percent of the, of the project money is being withheld back to, till the end of the project?
There will be change.
Oh, I thought there was a small retainage there, yes.
I believe there is.
Maybe.
I haven't seen a copy of the contract, so that's why I asked the question. And do you think that's an appropriate amount?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Would you check the percentage for us?
They'll just be paid to date what they have done. Whatever's left in a grant will stay until the project's completed, so.
What will constitute the signage? What work will be done with respect to signage? I mean, there's, there's one sign over there, two miles to Brad Street, I mean, that should go to the Historical Commission.
Yeah, the only signage that is going to be there is for the ADA compliance, like the crosswalk signs.
Okay, that's, it's not street signs, it's only, okay.
Yeah. It'll be all the crosswalk signs, pedestrian signs, maybe some children's sign if there's any.
Okay.
That's probably about it.
Okay, great. Rest of them?
I don't have it in front of me. What else do you have?
Prospect Court.
Prospect Street?
The Prospect Street Bridge, like I said, they expect to put it out to bid in January. That's what it seems to be. They're still evaluating all the data that they collected, and then, there seems to be no, no big problems.
When they going to start?
No, they're going to put it out to bid in January, that's their projection, yep.
Just let CPA know.
Yes, I've been giving them invoices, so.
Or CPC, rather.
They're well aware.
Fire station?
The corrective actions, I did get ahold of Belanger finally, as he's working at the school right now, about the mold issues. So they're going to, they're going to take care of that. And as far as the rest of the stuff, I'm still awaiting for the contractors to get back to me about, you know, it's minor repairs over there as far as, you know, changing the downs about the door. And like I said, we're going to take the monies out of the available money that's left in that project, for the run, for the whole overhaul scheme that was there. I know there's some monies left there. So we will be taking care of that before winter.
Talk about your session with, about the town hall renovation.
Well.
Well, that was interesting.
Have you discussed that with the elderly?
What's that?
Have you discussed that with the Council on Aging? Town Hall renovation, the impact?
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, we met with, I'm sorry, what's his name again?
Shay.
Kevin Shay.
Yes.
We met with Kevin Shay last week, and it was a good meeting, but there were some other options that we were looking at, so we're waiting for feedback from him, and then I was going to recommend we sit down with the Council on Aging. We just need to gather all the information.
Yeah, that's fine, I don't have a problem with that, but the problem becomes, out there, the word is, they're going to do what they want to do. And I said, "No, that's not the case."
No, and we told them we would get back to them, and we will.
All right.
We will.
Just wanted to make sure.
I just want to make sure that we have all our information so that when we sit down --
That's fine.
-- we put it all out there.
Actually, when they looked at alternative designs, which would cost more money, it would even more significantly impact their area than what is currently designed. So right now, it impacts 40%, and in their plan, they reallocate and relocate things that are being disturbed, disturb 40% of the area, but it would be an even larger amount to put something on the outside.
Right.
Because of where the machine room would go.
Correct.
For the elevator. So anyway, we will definitely close with it.
Yeah, we're waiting for the feedback.
And he was going to make up some display that we could show folks, what would, how it would work and what the impacts would be.
Right.
And how they're dealing with it.
And another part of that discussion with them is the next phase.
Yeah.
As far as, you know, as far as the Council on Aging's overhaul phase, as well as the museum, so.
Okay. All right. Pat, that's it, anything else for Phil?
Oh, the only thing is, you know, again, reminding the residents about no on-street parking during a winter event, you know, please comply, do not hamper our snow plowing removal operations. That's all I have.
I mentioned that suggestion that had been passed on by a citizen about not using salt on --
On the new sidewalk.
The new sidewalks, either by DPW or residents, because it takes over a year to cure, apparently. I didn't realize it took that long.
Yes.
So.
Yes, because if you use, if you use, you know, if you use the salt on the sidewalks now, it's going to pit it.
Yeah.
So we don't want that to happen, so please, you know, an ice melt product will work. The regular rock salt won't. It'll damage the sidewalk.
It'd be great if you got that message out more broadly than perhaps, who might be watching this.
What about sending a respectful note to each of the butters, to the areas of concern?
Well, maybe we could put something in, ask Jane Vessel to put something in her newsletter, and then perhaps on the Cable Access Channel.
Well, my only point is, is that if we send, if we send something specifically, and everybody has the same notice at the same time, and, you know, I didn't know, is not an argument.
There's, there's not really that many households there that we could do a mailing to. I mean, if that's what the board would like, I mean, I think that would be great.
But hearing that.
Well, that's my suggestion, I don't know how my colleagues feel.
Maybe with some suggestions as, what product to use. I know we went through that with the, with the school when we had the sidewalks redone, we had to.
You know, and I did, you know, and I respect the residents in that area, they, a few of them have come to me already and asked me, you know, what can they use on the sidewalk because they don't want to damage it, so, you know, that's, that's a good thing. You know, they're being proactive, so.
Is it less than a mile, the work that was done, or?
Yeah, it's not, yeah.
Yeah, so maybe, yeah.
It's really not that many homes, you know.
For the number, yeah, I could just send a letter to them.
The situation is tough to deal with after the fact.
Oh, absolutely.
Well, it's, it really looks nice now, and I want to doubt it. I apparently skipped over an item that Mr. Gahn brought to my attention, on item number two, representative to the Teachers Association negotiation.
We do that.
I'm, uh.
They already did it.
No, we have not. I did contact Colina Damski.
She's agreeable?
And she is.
All right, is there a motion to approve Ms. Colina Damski as the Board of Selectment representative to the School Department contract negotiating team?
So moved.
Techn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Superintendent has already reached out to me.
Okay.
I mean, we should do our, you know, make it official on our end, but as far as some of the specifics.
And I had let John know that she had accepted.
Town Administrator?
Okay, thank you. Just an update on the fiscal year '16 expenditure report. We had just quickly touched base on it at our previous meeting, but year-to-date expenditures should be 33% of their budget, and most are well within, in, within the 33%. There are a couple that are, are over, and we're aware of it, and it, you know, they're, they're above, they have not, we do have one shortfall, which is the emergency management. And what I found was that the, that budget was not funded in its entirety. That actually should have been $5,000, I think $517 should be in that line item. That's to cover the fee for the Code Red.
Phone system.
Phone system, correct. So we'll take that up at the end of the fiscal year, but as I said, every other department is in pretty, pretty good shape.
There is, you know, a couple other things, like the accountant, but Town Administrator has pointed out that that's in part consumed by some new training.
Training.
He's brand new in this. Emergency management just covered that somehow, it was clearly in the Fire Department's bailiwick, and somehow that got scratched from their budget.
There are some budgets, you know, we pay for expenses right up front, for example, the insurance policies.
And the lease is another big hunk.
Lease, exactly.
That's 79% expended, but that's because of the timing of the payments, that's nothing else.
You know, we are aware of those, and comfortable with it.
So except for essentially the emergency management net.
That's the only one.
Code Red. Okay, good.
It is. And the treasurer and accountant are still working on, on the town's receipts, bringing those year-to-date, so I hopefully will have something in December for the, for the board.
Okay.
At our previous meeting, we talked about a snow emergency declaration. I've provided you with a copy of that statute, and, and I would recommend that, you know, when or if we need it, to execute this, this statute at that time, and I think, I'm sure DPW is preparing for winter.
Unfortunately.
I know. Hoping we don't need to.
We've met all legal requirements in, in terms of how much we've budgeted vice last year, so it's simply a matter of a vote at the time if needed, and DPW already knows that they're going to press on if in fact there is a snow emergency.
Allow us to spend.
And that we, we would work with the Finance Committee and issue that declaration. Winter closing?
Yeah, I was just going to say, the other winter relative item I have is the town's closing policy. I have in your packet that policy from the town's HR manual. I did just make some small minor changes, and the town's system that we use is no longer Connect CTY, it's Code Red. And I'm not suggesting any changes to that policy unless the board feels differently, but I'm just referring to the minutes of last year, and which you should have in your packet, and there was an exception made last year.
It was changed last year, or the year before.
An exception to, yeah, having the town administrator, was the Selectman.
No, well, understand that, the Selectman will make a decision, but the town administrator's going to put out the announcement.
Right. Oh, that was 2012, I thought it was last year.
So, and the only thing, and we've had this, Town Administrator and I have had this discussion, when we're talking about town offices closed, we're only talking about the secretary at the Council on Aging, the collector, the treasurer, the assessor, and who's the last one? The accountant.
The accountant.
We're not talking about DPW, we're not talking about Fire, we're not talking about Police, all the usual suspects who respond to winter storms and or significant events.
Yeah, so you're talking about non-essential.
People are great at the use of that term, but I know what you mean.
They're still essential, I don't mean to say that they're not essential, but.
Well, if, I don't know that we need to clarify it further, I would say that if you're closing town hall, chances are the Police and Fire are going to be back in the Police and Fire Department, the DPW director's going to be in the DPW garage. So in fact, we are closing town hall, right?
Well, except for DPW.
But we don't know where the DPW director's going to be.
Right.
We don't know that.
Well.
He could be in the garage, so I don't know why we leave a building open with one person in it, is my point. We're either closing town hall or we're not, and people, you know, Phil's available via phone or whatever.
Well, the announcement will be affecting these people and not DPW.
I understand that, Jeff, but if you're closing town hall, then you're closing town hall, the building.
Oh, no, we're not. We're closing town offices, not, not the building.
Well, this says town hall closing.
And furthermore, if really any.
This is town hall closing, not town offices.
No, no. Here's, well, I'm reading the HR policy.
I'm reading the minutes from your meeting. I'm reading the minutes from your meeting. I mean, so let's, you know, let's just verify and clarify which it is.
Yeah. It's town offices, these offices, the Secretary, the Council on Aging, the Collector, the Treasurer, the Assessor, and the Accountant. That's who's...
I understand that, but when you make an announcement, whether it's on TV or through the...
Exactly.
Through the phones, they're not gonna list every department that's open or closed.
That's why it needs to be clear as to who this applies to.
Right. Everyone but DPW and Police and Fire.
Right.
Let's do it that way. I think that's easier and a shorter run.
We were, we were gonna talk about how to put out the announcement, either with the Code RED system and/or...
Looking at the Code RED, or perhaps the...
Town Administrator was talking about perhaps a call-in.
Code RED's only gonna help people that are connected via the phone. People that are coming from out of town aren't gonna know the Town Hall is or isn't closed if it's not publicized somehow on television. I mean, every TV station in western, in the country has a thing that rolls on the bottom saying what's open and what's closed.
The Code RED, I think, is set up, it used to be through Connect CTY. All town employees are listed, their contact numbers.
And they could enter either a home and/or cell, and/or both?
Well, and whoever puts the message on...
Code RED.
On that Code RED, you can select the, the individuals that that message is going to reach out to. And if, if you select all the employees that work in the Town Hall, then that message will, will reach out to those individuals. Provided those employees are listed in the system.
And what other businesses often do is they put a recording here at Town Hall on the main number that says town offices are closed today, and you tell the employees, "Call this number after 6:00 AM, 6:30 AM, 7:00 AM."
That's what I was proposing, a hotline. Employees could call into, and there would be a recording.
The reverse, right.
And that might be, actually be easier. Everybody would know where to call. You wouldn't miss anyone. It wouldn't make any difference where they were or whose telephone they were.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
That's right.
Just a matter of getting...
And we do have a line that's available.
Just gotta have someone, which can be done remotely, update, and let the employees know that, "Don't call it until, after a certain time, whatever that time is."
So, yes, I am exploring that, and...
Okay, well, let's, let's explore now.
Gather some more information and update the Board on it.
That sounds a lot easier to administer.
Sure.
Then there's no excuse. If the employees are calling a number, if you're on Code RED, and they'll say, "Well, I didn't get the call."
Yeah.
Well, I don't, so, okay.
Okay.
Well...
So, I will continue to...
We've talked about declarations, no emergency spending, talked about this. What about out here? Have we got this, the parking arrangements squared away for the wintertime?
No, I've been trying to...
Well, I was, I'm shaking my head yes, saying, well, we've talked about it at the Department Head Meeting.
We've talked about it, but we haven't reached out across the street.
I will contact Brian McGrath, not Brian McGrath, Mike McGrath.
Okay.
And set up a meeting for the three of us.
Okay.
Okay. And the, and the other thing, though, is the plowing, and so the ambulance can get out, and...
There, there's no issue with the ambulance getting out.
All right, all right. Don't wanna have them show up at 2:00 in the morning, and there's two feet of snow, and they can't... Okay.
No. We have one individual assigned to just do this parking lot in the school, keep the school parking lot open.
Okay.
So, that's their job function.
Okay, great. So, that part's taken care of. So, the only thing is keeping the other, some panel on cars and where they are.
Yeah, I mean, it's the cars.
So, you're clear?
It's not the plowing, it's the car situation.
Right.
Somewhat on this topic, but a little off.
Sure.
Which I wanted to ask Phil about was, at the very end of the driveway...
Yes.
This driveway.
Yes.
Where it's wider, to make, I'm guessing, emergency vehicles to make wider turns, left or right, people have been parking there.
And...
Is there a way that we can stripe it, or say, "No parking here"?
The only thing we can do is stripe where our property ends, because most of that property out there is the right-of-way for the neighbor. That a black, that wider blacktop area is his access.
Oh, so his property real...
His access apron.
Does he have a problem with people parking there?
He doesn't say anything, but I'm sure he would.
I didn't realize that.
Yeah.
That's fine. It just seemed that we went through all this to get the cars off the side to make, you know, and it's...
I mean, we surely could run a stripe out there.
I see the same car every time that they're here at a particular meeting. So, I mean, I wish we could, you know, maybe give a ticket or something, but if that's not our property, then I guess we can't.
It's the driveway apron to...
Okay.
Marlene?
Okay. We're all set on, on the winter for now.
Well, I would say, who's gonna ultimately make the decision? Is it based after speaking with Phil and the Police Chief, that Town Hall is in fact closing? I mean, I know it says one of the selectmen, but I mean...
Typically, typically it's DPW and Police get together.
I mean, some of it's probably obvious, and other times it's maybe not so obvious.
And one of us will make a call, and...
All right.
Marlene will put out the, put out the message.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
We received a, a letter from Maya. Due to the success of their program and the town's excellent loss history, they're offering us a renewal for fiscal year 17 with a rate change of 0% for fiscal year 17, and a rate increase of no more than 2.5% for fiscal year 2017.
18.
18, I'm sorry, fiscal year 18. This is contingent on us maintaining a favorable loss for all coverage below 60% through fiscal year 18. We've been happy with Maya.
Yeah, they've been very good, actually.
What's that?
They've been very good.
They have been. My recommendation is to, to accept this renewal offer, the 0% for fiscal year 17, and the 2.5...
Up to.
Up to 2.5% for fiscal year 18.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome. We received notification from Housing and Economic Development regarding the town's applications, two applications, the 2015 Mass Works Infrastructure Program, and I did forward that to you and Mike. Unfortunately, we did not make this grant wrong for either of the applications, the water street, water sewer infrastructure, and the other one was the Mill River Crossing Water Infrastructure. And they do recommend that if we should apply next year, just, they recommend that we increase our project readiness, and I guess that's, all we can do is resubmit next year. Do you have any thoughts on that, Phil?
Project readiness?
Yeah, right.
We're ready to put the shovel in the ground on Chestnut Street.
I, I was surprised when I saw that, so I, you know, was thinking...
That tells me someone didn't really look at that application.
Okay. I was reading between the...
We're ready to go. It's engineered, it's ready for the shovel in the ground, so I don't know how much more readiness you can be.
Well, we strengthen the argument to the extent we can get folks to come online in writing, saying, "If you build it, I'll come."
Yeah, but I'm talking about the water transmission main.
I'm talking about the water sewer. Oh, the transmission. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about the water sewer.
I'm not talking about the water sewer. I'm talking about the other part, going the Mill River Cross.
Yeah.
My question was, you know, did we fail to, to present something, or maybe the projects did not, the application did not give the appearance?
The application could bring tears to your eyes. It was very...
Well, I did review it, but I wasn't sure if there was information that we...
No, it was honest, straightforward, and it articulated the case, I thought, very well, or as well as it could be made.
Yeah, it's a competitive market.
Well, if they, if they refuse, I mean, or send us a negative, isn't it logical to assume that along with the negative, would it be a clarification as to why? Isn't that a legitimate rationale here?
I mean, it's, I think it's a boilerplate rejection. That's what it seems to me.
Well, send them a boilerplate response. Why?
We, we could pursue that. We've, actually, we've...
I mean, how do we improve, excuse me, Jeff, how do we improve on the negativism associated with their response if we don't know what their response was?
Exactly.
Why? Why were they upset? All right, pardon me, not upset, inappropriate word. Why did they refuse it? I mean, it's just pure logic, is it not? Or am I missing something here?
No, you're not. Because when this program first started, when they combined it, they used to have a follow-up meeting with each town that they rejected, and they would give you whys, the whys.
Thank you.
They, they must have criteria that they, they follow, and...
It's a point, it's a point system. When you apply with the grant, it's a point system. You get X amount of points for this and that.
I accept individually that we don't obviously win everything, okay? And I'm sure my colleagues do as well. But if we don't have a clear understanding as to what we did wrong within the application, how do we improve on it?
Excellent point, and...
It's not rocket science here.
We have gone back in other years and had someone come out from Mass Works and debrief us on, on why some of the pitfalls in our applications. But we haven't on this particular one at all, so...
No.
But let's, we'll, we'll take that on to follow up with Mass Works to get some greater specificity as to what, what we might have done to strengthen it. And it may be just other people had better cases, I don't know, but we could at least pursue it and ask.
Well, and that's what we need to know.
Sure.
We need to hear from them.
No, you're right.
I don't wanna cause any trouble, but I mean, it just seems to me, and I believe my colleagues, that it's purely logical that we can, once again, expect some kind of response so we'll know how to, what to improve on in the event that something else comes up that we can apply for. So...
Well, I mean...
Sorry, I believe in the point.
No, but, no, but, you know, you're absolutely right, because in the past years, when we, when we did have that debriefing, you know, it brought to light a few items that, you know, we did improve on, and, you know, where they thought we should be going and what direction. We took their advisement, and here we are still.
Yeah, we are.
That's too bad.
Next amp?
Moving on, next amp, Hazard Mitigation Plan, just to, to bring the Board up to, up to speed. That plan has been, well, I did state that Pioneer Valley Planning has submitted to MEMA for review. It will go to FEMA for approval, and then come to the Board of Selectmen for adoption. I've been told this could take up to nine months between MEMA and FEMA.
Well...
Quite a while.
So, how do we make changes?
Well, we could submit recommended changes to Pioneer Valley. I would do it, I would do it through Pioneer Valley. They submitted it to MEMA on behalf of the town, and that maybe they could forward that information to, to MEMA. It is with MEMA at this point.
Well, page 85, in the action plan, we have delete the word "hope" in the schedule. We, we hope to do something. Hope is an aspiration, not a plan. You know, we need the best timeframe in there, not hoping, best timeframe that we have available. Pages 81, 82, and 85, why is the Board of Selectmen listed as an action office? I mean, we're, we're not, the staff has the action on these things, not the Board of Selectmen, and we're involved in virtually all of them, and yet we're named in some and not others. I just didn't... Page 76, Hatfield's not a city. Someone cut and pasted from another plan. And just a couple things came up when you read this thing. I don't know who's read the Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan, but that's something that should be brought to the Board. We should at least know what's in that. And then I, just a question for Emergency Management, what, what is the benefit of us becoming part of the community, FEMA Community Rating System? It talks in there about studying the costs involved, well, I guess apparently in this fiscal year. But if you read the plan, if you read the plan in its total, when it talks about flooding and water issues, Planning Board has, you know, got the right things in place virtually across the board. They've got a pretty good handle on all that. So, I'm just trying to understand why, what's the value of pursuing that?
Okay.
And then, a comment to everyone, if the action is in there and it's important, then it ought to be embedded in your capital planning request, like DPW with respect to issues concerning the dike. There are some of those that are listed as high priority, and there's some other ones. And/or your operating budgets for this coming year. But good piece of work.
Just an update on the ongoing communication with the NEXAMP. I'm in the process of setting up a meeting, so Pat, I'll be in touch with you. You're representing the Board of Selectmen. We'll have some informal discussion about that.
Excellent.
Okay.
My schedule is very flexible.
Thank you. The expedited permitting process, I'm continuing to work on that, and...
Well, in that regard, though, before that meeting, has Pat been given any of the materials published by DOR concerning these kinds of agreements?
Just what I've provided in the past, the packets, but I have all that information available on file, so I can, I can provide that with you.
No, that's...
Just give it to me.
Some lessons learned about things that should be covered in terms of scope, you know, don't have specific numbers, rather have a formula for compute, how you compute it, because things change. You take off solar panels, you add...
DOR's outline is, is helpful.
Okay.
I was just starting to say, the expedited permitting process plan that we're working on, that continues. I'm working in conjunction with, with WELMA on that. Housing Plan Study Update, the committee is reviewing the final draft, November 19th, which is this week, and they expect to meet with the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board. I told them I would make arrangements to coordinate that. So, it'll be a joint meeting. So, yeah, we're looking at a presentation in December.
Okay, we'd like to have their plan ahead of the meeting, so...
Right. That's why they're meeting this week, then give the Board members, Planning Board, and Selectmen time to review it.
Okay.
And just one last item. On Friday, I attended the Connecticut Valley Superintendent's Roundtable Discussion. I was invited by Superintendent John Robert and Eileen McInnany, President of the Massachusetts Taxpayer Foundation, was the speaker, and it was very interesting. And, and I provided you with a copy of, of that handout, that presentation. Overall, the, the state is, is using a lot of, most, a lot of their funding is coming from the stabilization account to fund their operating budget, and they need to...
Pullback.
Move, yes, absolutely. And they need to look at, at what's causing, causing, you know, the rise in expenses, and they're looking at revenues, and was it 58% revenues comes from real estate property. But I hope you find that handout in there. I just, I made notes in there, so just, can just overlook those, but anyway. I, I was glad I attended that.
Do you have anything else?
Uh, that is all I have.
I just had one other item, note from Bob Wagner. Town of Hatfield got $129,092 in matching funds CPA from the state. That was a 94.5% match. Statewide, the match was 41.02%.
Wow.
So, we did...
So, we did very well.
We did, we did very, very well on our match. It's great.
You do a great job.
Wow.
Is that it?
That's all I have.
Do you have anything else, Pat?
No.
Excuse me. No, I'm all set.
Motion to go into executive session, consist of Massachusetts General law, Chapter 38, Section 21, Rule 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel. to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel. Excuse me, to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel. And we will not be returning to open session.
Or you already aye?
Well, aye.
Who made the second?
Oh, I'll second.
I'll second.
Oh, you could second, yeah.
All right.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Or you already aye?
Boy, aye.
Gah, aye.
And motion to adjourn.
Gah, aye.
Second, well, we're going into executive session.
Yeah, we are. Then we're not coming back to open session. We're adjourning the open session. All in favor?
Aye.